Up in a minute as well. So we'll be streaming and sharing the presentation in seconds. So before we get started, so while we get these, we get the slide that I just like to share a quick refresher on what exactly is CBRC, our Community Budget Review Committee. So each year, the Board of Education appoints a Community Budget Review Committee, CBRC, to assist in our annual budget process. The CBRC reviews, evaluates, and makes recommendations to the Board regarding the superintendent's proposed budget and any other budgetary issues the CBRC or the Board identify. And the CBRC also plays a critical role in to monitor and advise the Board on the allocation of expenditure of the local option levy funds. And with that in mind, I'd like to ask our CBRC members to introduce themselves. Just briefly, share how they're affiliated with our PPS community. And why don't we start with Mr. Roger Kirshner?
I'm the longest-serving member on the committee. I've been on it for over a decade. I'm a PPS graduate, graduated Cleveland High School. I have an older daughter who graduated Grant, a younger daughter graduated Cleveland, or Franklin, and that's where I volunteer on a daily basis. In one way or another, my family has been associated with Portland Public Schools for over 50 years. Both my parents taught in the system. So through them, know several different schools in the, in the system. In, in, I would say in the years that I have been on CBRC, it used to be called the Citizen Budget Review, and then it got revised to be more all encompassing by calling it community. And fortunately, we didn't have to change the acronym. So, but the, the role that Roberto referred to of our reviewing the local option levy is required by law, and that it's part of your publication that you give to the voters when they approve that, that it will be reviewed by a community body to ensure that the funds are being appropriately utilized as, as described. And so, and so that's a role that we take very seriously. Over the years that I've been on the committee, we actually established a side account so it's more easily accounted for with the district and so on when we do that. So, so we are a community body that really drills down in detail on your budget. And you will find that for you new board members, for example, that as the budget is now presented in two volumes, that the second volume will be the most informative in terms of you dealing with your constituents in that it describes the individual allocations by school, the staff, the dollars, and so on. And, and that's quite frankly, from my experience, is what the public is generally interested in. Unlike your board meeting where you receive public testimony, which is certainly valuable, hopefully the comments that you've received from CBRC are informed and are more expert based on the study that we give the, the issues at hand. Our numbers are large, are smaller this year, and, and I don't know whether it's COVID that has accounted for that, but hopefully we can get our membership back up to the, a lot of number. So I'll speak right now.
Thank you, Roger. And for what is where we are putting a plan in place to more actively engage our community and bring back our CBRC numbers. So that's also exciting, something else that we're, we're working on.
I did want to add that we're delighted that having Parker back on the committee. Thank you for bringing this point to the table.
So I wanted to give a quick opportunity to like make sure our, our Board of Directors also get to know CBRC. So why don't we go with, with Parker, freshly added to CBRC, freshly mentored.
As of this evening. Well, good evening. I'm Parker Myras. I'm a junior from Benson and Benson's District Student Council Representative.
Go Techmen.
Pardon?
Go Techmen.
Absolutely.
Tech people.
Yeah.
Tech people.
Thanks, Chris. Yep, yep, yep. I've served two years on the Community Budget Review Committee previous to this one. Last year, I served as one of the vice chairs. I volunteered this year following the resignation of another student. And, and as of tonight, I'm, I'm back on. So I'm, I'm excited to, to dig in, even though I'm about halfway through. I'll do my, do my best to catch up.
Thank you. Ilona Wilson.
Yes, my name is Jemon J. Wilson, and I use few of her pronouns. I am a graduate from Franklin High School. I went to Mount Hill Middle School and about 11 elementary schools between Rashaam and Portland. And I am still very much in community and Executive Director of NextUp, which is an organization that is an incubator for young leaders, specifically young leaders of color in Oregon, and very much dedicated to ensuring that there is justice and equity for young people and that they're centered in the work that we do. So excited to be close with you. I've known Roger since I was maybe one. So maybe even before then, I think I was three months. And so, yeah, excited to be in this space with you. It's a lot of familiar faces, but excited to check in with you a little bit more.
Thank you. And joining us through Zoom, we have Lisa Selman.
Hi there. My name is Lisa Selman. I'm a sophomore at Lincoln High School. And I joined the CBRC last year during the 2021 school year. And so I'm still learning a lot and look forward to hearing the conversation tonight.
Thank you. And also on through Zoom, we have Hobbs Waters, which thank you for joining. I think you were a little under the weather.
Yeah, I'm still feeling a little sick here, so I probably won't be talking as much. I'm Hobbs, I'm the other student, CBRC member. I'm not enrolled in PPS or even, I'm a high school student, but the PPS students are my peers, and so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. And we have another CBRC member who couldn't make it tonight, who went pool, wasn't able to join us, but sure she'll catch up. So, and, and so I also just take a quick moment to acknowledge Jordan Cooper and Alexander Martin, who are members on my team and work on a lot of projects, but they're also key to our twice a month CBRC monthly engagements. So I appreciate them being here. So why don't we go on to the next slide?
Well, Roberto, before you get in, thank you for introducing the CBRC members, but I can't think of a better way to commemorate his one-year anniversary for the public schools, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. Yeah, no, don't kick me. Time flies when you're having fun, you know?
Last, last year, he helped us remotely. He was.
That's right.
We were meeting at night at our normal hour time, and, and he, he was on the East Coast or wherever it was in Oklahoma, somebody.
That's what I'm doing. That's literally. Well, Roberto, just for the benefit of our CBRC, just a quick down the row of the CEP staff.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's great.
Well, I don't think I know the superintendent of schools.
Jackson Weinberg, key chief pronouns, student rep to the Board of Education.
Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff here at PPS.
Bernard Adams, Chief of Research Assessment and Retonability.
Sharon Proctor, Deputy Superintendent of Destruction.
Claire Roost, Deputy Superintendent of Visomos.
Our Regional Superintendent, of course, middle schools, high schools, and multiple counties in Bradish.
President of California.
Kate Wuppin, Assistant General Counsel.
Let's not forget Kara, because we would eat or be organized.
I'm Terry.
Or function without Terry, yes.
Hi, Terry Proctor, Department of Education, and I hope to meet you.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone.
We have a couple.
Did we miss? I, yeah, please.
I'm James, I'm the Senior Director of Students Succession.
Cheryl Harrison, of the School Social Work on Special Assignment.
Thank you. It just zoomed out, I guess. Yeah, so thank you.
I will make a review.
Board members, you go forward now.
Yes, let's go for it.
Yeah, let's go.
Amy Lowry, Board Member, Informers, CBRC Member.
Julia Brimadworth, Board Member.
Sheldon Pass, Board Chair.
Oops, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're, I think the time changes got us a little bit.
Andrew Scott, he in pronouns, I'm the Board Vice Chair.
Good weekend, everyone.
Now the big show.
All right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, introductions are important, we need to build communities. I appreciate that. And we go on to the next slide. Tonight, we will have a presentation and then a discussion regarding a framework that encompasses some core components of the district's instructional vision and how our resources. So when we think about our people, time, and money, we'll be working in unison to impact our student outcomes. And as part of our, our work session, we share with you our board goals and achievement data, although we won't revisit those in detail tonight. I'm sure Dr. Adams is probably a little disappointed there. But nonetheless, we, we wanted to share them to ground in the why for our work. And so in a few moments, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Proctor, who will walk us through an overview of instructional investments that get us closer to achieving our board goals and our strategic plan. We move on to the next slide. So when we start thinking about our strategic plan, yeah, our strategic plan, Forward Together describes a set of collective and coherent actions and goals that taken together will set in motion the changes needed to bring our vision to fruition. So when we think about our strategic plan, change is indeed needed in order to raise student achievement, especially for students of color. If you go on to the next slide, back in December, Dr. Adams shared student achievement data, and sometime in February, Dr. Adams walked CBRC through the same data. And he shared a compelling why for change, a compelling why for disrupting the patterns that prevent our most underserved students from thriving. Students of color show greater levels of unfinished and interrupted learning in reading and mathematics, often demonstrating achievement levels far below grade level expectations. So we go to the next slide. So in, in, to sum it up, given these realities, PPS will target investments to advance student outcomes. So I want to turn it over to Dr. Proctor, who will then share with you a high-level overview of how some of these investments are going to be tied in to advance student outcomes.
Thank you, number. So next slide. You know, we have a theory of action here at PPS, an logic model that really drives our direction and informs our strategic investments at everyone's. It is a model operating one that we do to make decisions next slide. So our theory of action is.
Excuse me, Dr. Proctor, but the acoustics in this room are not very good. So would you please speak up so we can hear you?
I'll be happy to, number. So our theory of action really is presented there. It says that if we bring equity and social justice strategies into our instructional core, work with our students, teachers, and content, and build our organization culture and capacity to create strong foundation to support every student, then we will reimagine PPS to ensure that every child, especially our Black and Native students, realize the vision of the graduate portrait. The next slide. So this is an overview of a logic model, and I will take us through each section of the logic model. But in essence, you know, it starts with looking at our situations, our priorities, and then drives our actions in a forward motion that looks at our inputs, our, in this case and for this conversation would be, you know, how we make strategic investments and the outputs, the activities that are influenced and outputs that we'll get to then drive towards further our outcomes and long-term impact. As we do this work and we think through this model, we understand that it's not just linear, but at the bottom, you will see that there are a set of assumptions, external factors, and a process by which we want to ensure that we're evaluating and monitoring our progress towards our goal. Next slide. So as I take us through, you know, this logic model, this, you know, the strategic investments to meet board goals and to realize the theory of action is the grounding scenario, right? It's the grounding situation. And within that, we also want to lift out and prioritize our Black and Native students, our CSI, NTSI, and Title Four schools. So we have, you know, within this priority, a, a narrow focus with, with our intentions to not just meet these goals for all students, but by meeting the goals for our most marginalized students, ensure that we are then lifting up and moving forward every student collectively. So some of the inputs that we are looking at, and these are just, this is like a model narrative, if you will, for me to share and describe to you. These are some of the investments that we have made and are looking at. And as we continue to build the budget, we will finalize and determine what the final inputs would be. But some of those inputs, inputs begin to look like the arts pathway, investments in countros and social workers, investments to reduce class size, investments to, to invest in instructional specialists within our most A schools, investments into a seven-period day for our schools, professional learning for our staff, and, and grounded in instructional framework, and looking at student needs, you know, for competitive, etc. You know, participation in these investments, some of the details, what it would look like if you asked, well, what does that actually look like? Some of these investments that we go across, you know, for the arts pathway, it would be more schools with visual, visual and performing arts. For councils of social work, as you can see, following the linear approach, it would be FTE across schools and, and targeted Title Four schools and TSI schools, class sizes, additional FTE for differentiated ratios for CSI, Title Four schools, improved ratios for K8. Instructional specialists, again, get invested in our CSI, TSI, Title Four schools, that seven-period day, investing additional FTE in A middle schools, investing in professional learning days for adoptions, you know, as we are doing curriculum adoption this year, and also instructional frame, the instructional framework, and looking at how we could support our students who are then in need. And then the out, the outputs, you know, then looks like programs, social emotional supports, individualized instruction, targeted, targeted acceleration, you know, additional electives, access, better access to those electives for our EL and our special ed students, investments in staff, coherence within our instructional practices, and a better, a better monitoring of our on-track students towards graduation. Next slide.
Dr. Proctor, just, I thought I heard you say a seven-period day for high school students?
No, middle schools.
For middle schools? Okay, I was gonna say, thank you.
So looking at this slide, you know, just really to chock out the logic model, you see on the upper right-hand corner, we have the model still visualized, but you see that red illumination, that red circle, if you will, or it really just highlights our speaking point on this slide, which really talks about strategic investments, that our strategic investments are targeted to specifically fit through and to meet our board goals and to realize our theory of action with a focus on schools identified specifically for improvement. As, as to break it down further, while I did talk through the specifics within each of these, you know, each of these investment again is aligned to the strategic plan, to target improvements and to ensure better outcomes for our Black and Native children. Next slide. And as I spoke to, to, next, next slide. Yep, thank you. And as I spoke through some of these activities that we, that are listed here, you know, just it's important to note and lift up that these investments will meet students and staff, will have tools and supports and opportunities that they need. Next slide. And as I spoke through some of what, some of this, let me stay here for a minute, when it comes to the outcomes, you know, there, we look at the outcomes in terms of what would be our short-term outcomes and our long-term outcomes. And so for all of the investments that we are, that we are, you know, targeting, you know, the short term really looks like better engagement, a deeper response, pandemic response, you know, social emotional healing, greater investments in the holistic child. And also speaks to the third-grade reading and fifth-grade math goals that are part of board goals, and our eighth-grade attainment of graduate portrait, you know, through middle school design, and also the eighth-grade goals with the, in the board goals, and then our graduate portrait and the fulfillment of that graduate portrait. It means that in the short term, through the investments, for example, in professional development, we'll have a stronger, more excellent, you know, workforce that is well-prepared, knowledgeable, and, and skilled in meeting student needs, and that we're able to greater attain our focus and our goals towards post-secondary readiness for our students. And so these targeted investments, you know, in the short term, help us to realize just these goals and, and the ideals that we strive towards. The next slide. And as we work through, linearly through our logic model, and identify and solidify our inputs, looking towards specific outputs and activities for the positive impact and meeting our outcomes, which are our board goals, we have to keep in mind in time, there are.
A mirror and a plate still need to happen.
Within this.
You can feel these little faces with their eyebrows and their eyes, like they don't have hope for anything.
To, you know, achieve, there are some assumptions that we need to flush through, you know, you know, so for example, targeted investments are critical to realize the theory of action and graduate portrait. And it's, it's, it's knowing and believing that in order to achieve something different and to have different outcomes for, for our students, we have to realize that this assumption is critical and will need it. Investing sufficient amounts for class size to reduce K8. Also, it's an investment, but it's only one part of the whole picture. So we know that class size will be a contributing factor to us attaining the board goals. And we have to continue, that's why we have to continue with the monitoring and, and the evaluation of the effectiveness of the work that we do. You know, there are external factors that have impacted our ability to, that could potentially have impacts, both positive impacts and negative impacts. So for example, you know, COVID-19 pandemic is one that has a negative impact, and we just have to be mindful of some of those. But some of those positive impacts, external factors that are, you know, state-funded, that came with that, you know, local political, and local politics and the union can also bring positive influences into our work, and we want to raise it and hold it for the positive influence that it can have. Again, collectively talking about these external factors. And, you know, there are means by which we're going to work through the evaluation and progress monitoring process, that means looking at MAC data, SMAC data, looking at our success with school survey, and always measuring our, our progress against those board goals. Next slide. So at this point, we'll move into a collective discussion through a series of questions, and I'm going to turn it over to number one.
Yeah.
To take us through this.
Great, thank you for that. And before I move on, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Ms. Renee Anderson was unable to join us today. She is also a very involved CBRC member, so she did share that she, she, so she wasn't able to make it, so we will miss her, but we'll also catch her up. So for, for the next part of our evening, I want to welcome us to a discussion centered around three questions. And, and so the discussion around these three questions are an important piece of continuing to raise awareness of, for why we invest in our instructional strategy. And so want to follow a process of spending 20 minutes on each question. And we'll, if we go on to the next slide, we can open it up for questions and, and discussion around what elements of this framework and its relationship to our student achievement data are most compelling to you and why. So want to open it up for CBRC board to, to chime in.
I'll start.
Yes.
Just one of the elements that I find compelling is the focus on students and focusing on the students who we've said that we want to prioritize in terms of changing student outcomes. The other element that I'm appreciative of that's in there is it's not just a focus on inputs and outputs, but outcomes.
I would, I would echo that, the kind of results-based accountability model where we're looking at, I mean, the logic model shows the inputs, the assumptions, underlying assumptions, the inputs, the digestion piece, and then what the outputs are expected. And I was really happy to see, when I reviewed the logic model, to look at the participation investment details, I think it's on the second or third, it's the second page of the logic model, that talks about, kind of envisions more schools with visual arts and music, additional FTE across schools that targeted for Title and TSI schools, emotional, social emotional supports, I think was in there as well. But, so, I mean, I'm looking to those activities, but also really have appreciated this model, how it, how it leads to the outcomes that we want to see. And then it's not just, we're, we're not just measuring inputs, we're literally looking at, measuring outcomes and outputs. Also, just really excited about visual arts and music, I think are ways to keep kids in school, to engage them in ways, I just speak for myself, that, you know, maybe sitting in a class for eight hours doesn't, isn't, isn't for everyone. So, yeah, really happy to see the arts and music listed.
I'm happy that we're focusing on this, reflecting on the public testimony that the Board has received thus far. Reflecting on the public testimony that the board has received thus far, I think there is a lack of focus to realize that what there seem to be advocating is dipping into these funds that, and this is why we get legislative responses saying, oh, you've got plenty of money, because they have appropriated funds for specific causes and, and purposes, like restricted funds are. And, and if we dip into those to supplement class sizes, teacher salaries, whatever, we're impacting this, this effort. And, and I think that is not a, well-known to the public or to our workforce and, and we need to work on that.
Yeah, one thing I really appreciate is, I think, to share to pass this point that we're not just looking at like what credit recovery or rigorous teaching models, how we're funding that, but also looking at, we're funding counselors and social workers and instruction specialists, all these other things that help a student achieve at school. I think Dr. Proctor, women, back with the DSC, put it perfectly that the outcomes we're looking for are the byproduct of all of these investments that we're putting towards the whole student, not just their education.
Yeah, the question around our, the relation to the logic model to student achievement data, and I really, I see that really clearly with our, you know, the class size reduction and the instructional specialist really focusing in on that third grade reading and especially math. I think that we've seen that, you know, our data shows us that we have much larger gaps in math, that all of our students are struggling to be on target for math, but especially our Black boys and seeing that. And I know that the professional excellence that our staff capacity and programs of instruction, I know that math and our new curriculum adoption is vital to our ability to move to enable for students and especially helping our teachers move from teaching repetition and patterns into being able to deeply teach the concepts of the math, starting early and going all the way through high school is vital. So I see, you know, in this logic model, it contains lots and lots of pieces that go directly to that student achievement data file that we have and those places where we see large gaps. And it's, it's very clear to see from this, like those investments we're making. And I also really appreciate, I know it's not the third and fifth grade, third grade reading, fifth grade math, but that seventh grade day in middle school is so crucial. And in fact, from what you said tonight, about some of the hate being sort of solidified and happening in middle school, I think if we get our middle schoolers more resources, more ability to participate in classes, more social supports, that's really going to help shift that middle school experience to make it more successful. And we'll also see that benefit in our high school student outcomes. So I think I really appreciate the ways that this clearly responds to where our student achievement data has been showing us that our students need additional lessons.
Have you quantified, let me, one piece that's missing for me, maybe this gets a little bit to Rogers, the issue that Roger asked about is like, what's the monetary? Am I setting you up for something?
No, no, that, that, not tonight, but yes, right? That's where we want to, like, it, it's, like, last week, we had a big conversation around kind of like the high-level overview. And today, bringing it down to a focus on the why for some of these investments in dollars, but then eventually to also be able to get to a point where we can tie the package deal, what, what does that, like, funding look like as we think about, how does SIA play into this? How much is SIA funding this logic model? What is then, what is the, the role that ESTR plays? So that, that's part of like the ongoing refinement we're doing and, and going through that. So that will be subsequent components to it as well.
Yeah, I think it's important because like whatever, I'm glad you heard some of that because if you're ever going to say no, you have to be able to say what you're saying yes to, because that's the most powerful answer to, here's why we're not doing this, because we prioritize this. And I think in some ways, because the conversation, the sequence in the conversation, it leads people to like a different place than, it's, it's an important part of it for us to have conversations in the community. What are we saying yes to so that you know what you're, why you may have to say no to something else?
A, a big complaint to, as a compelling why, and I think about the achievement data. And, and so then the vision to create this logic model to start. I don't want to say attack, but to start, you know, addressing the, the, the achievement data.
I think you're seeing the next level down of what you heard last week. Just to drill down a little bit more into the, the elements, you know, in, in this logic model, I think as the weeks go by, now you'll start to see, oh, let's say additional FTEs to bring the ratio. How many is that? And how are those being funded? Roger reminded us the SIA, its intention was to create a well-balanced program of support. One of those was class size, but the other for social emotional supports. But we make a calculated response, well, how many social workers can we sustain? The good thing with SIA is it's perpetual. Whereas if we were to spend ESTR monies, we'd be facing a cliff in two years. But that's a perfect funding source for investing in staff to professional learning. Now, how do we build up PD time? How do we adopt curriculum adoptions that are budget-funded? So it is how to be jigsaw, all of our revenue streams in, in a way that's balanced, sustainable and prudent. And so I think what we're trying to paint a picture of here is, here's sort of the plan moving forward that keeps our board goal and, and our need for organizational capacity in mind. So, well, we'll start now to reveal itself. Okay, what are the numbers that come? Where do each of these ingredients, where are we drawing?
And I think that has to be shared with our labor collective bargaining units. And it needs to be shared with our legislative body representatives from the Portland metro area. And because they're, they listen to their legislative fiscal analyst who's been in that position for over 10 years. And, and the numbers that he's spouting out do not reconcile with what our, our professional staff, right? And that is very confusing to the public and obviously to what shows up at our board meetings.
Another great point by Roger. So last week, I had the benefit to speak to all of our local electeds and walk them through, you know, some accurate information about the direction we're going with our investments and a commitment to keep them progressively informed in a similar way, you know, trailing what we're sharing with the board, so that they also can speak to it in an accurate way too. So you're right, that's important.
Both my senator and my representative were on the SIA commission and sponsored it, and they steadfastly stand by the legislative fiscal act. So something's wrong.
And so thinking about question number one, if there are not any other comments, we can move on to question number two.
Final question, five, two. You leave it at the logic model. You mean, it's a social, it's a social factor, it's a primary business partner. How do that tie into accountability?
Can't hear you, Gary, I'm sorry.
How do that tie into accountability when, how can you, as you'll hear, in your evaluation and monitoring, then what happens?
Right, that's a really great question. The accountability comes in multiple layers and in a couple of different ways. The first is in the original design of the logic model. As you can see, we really are focused on the outcomes and the outcomes toward our collective goals. So the purpose then of doing the progress monitoring and the evaluation or the assessment along the way is to inform us on how well we're doing in meeting the goal. So I give the example to say, if I set a goal that says, with this baseline, I want to see the achievement from here, from, you know, one point at the beginning of the year to another, to a targeted goal outcome by the end of the year, we can't wait till the end of the year to assess whether or not we've been successful. So the progress monitoring and the ongoing evaluation of our progress towards the goal would look like a quarterly review, a monthly, you know, as data comes available, analysis, observational, you know, looking at how our implementation efforts are moving towards what we intended to do. And then looking at early data to determine the impact and effectiveness of that implementation towards the outcome. So it looks kind of cyclical, that ongoing throughout period of time, we are, we are monitoring, we are assessing, using fall back data and revisiting it again with the winter back data and, and then tracking. The accountability piece comes also when we answer the question for ourselves to say, what do we do when we find that we are on track? How do we leverage the things that are working to continue on track? And what happens if we realize we're not seeing the results early on in the data that we, that we need to see? It gives us a, a early point then to make some course corrections in our strategy and to shore up by implementing, you know, additional direction so that we can stay on the path to work.
A great answer.
They're like, it's clear in my head.
I got no follow-up to that, that was, thanks.
So one thing, and we heard a little bit about this tonight, a fellow commented and then Dr. Adams had sent the, sort of the basic, since we're backing into the staffing conversation, the sort of the, the document, the staffing formulas. And is the new way in which the staff is allocated based on progression towards, you know, where, where students are and then they get a X number of staff or a half a staff or a quarter of staff, is, is that, is that new this year?
Yeah, I, I often refer to the team, I don't, I don't.
It's not, it's not, yeah, it's not new. I think what happens.
It's not new to PPS?
No, it's, it's a weighted. If you're looking at specific program, it is a weighted calculation. So what I'd like to clarify, yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying, because I think that's an important thing for the community because I have never heard that we use a weighted formula based on where students are in terms of their achievement, which I think is a, is a, is a important.
It's, it's, so if I could just try to address it. So you have students who are in specialized programs. And by the design and basic federal and state law of like specialized programming, the students are weighted, that really calculates to that they count as more than. What I've noticed in some of our, in some of our, how we communicate in publication, we didn't tie the, you know, string this together a little bit better, is when we talk about class size, the student is weighted, is counted as a whole. When we talk about the proportion to which the student receives the contact from specialized program, it is dependent on where the student is in that specialized program. I'll give you a special ed, if, if it's a special ed ELD, I'll give you a special ed example. In special ed, we have a matrix, right? So the funding for a student who is profoundly disabled, you know, intellectually impaired, for example, is different from the weighting of a student who has, who has dyslexia and is fully included in the general education classroom, right? The student who is profoundly disabled has a multiplication of weight, right? But all students count as a whole and the weight is in addition to the whole. What we often do, what I, what I think I see and where the misnomer is for the community is they only see the, the portion of the weight that applies to the specialized program. They're not seeing and realizing that they are also weighted and counted as whole when it comes to class size.
And also that those formula are established by the state and federal government, not by the district.
Maybe the misunderstanding, maybe the misunderstanding is like when it says zero, it's actually one.
It's one.
And the point two-five is one point two-five.
Exactly.
So it may help people to understand it, to have it be like presented that way because, you know, I think there's all sorts of.
I agree. In other districts where I've worked, that's exactly how we present it. So you will see that a general ed student who is in just a general second grade class, they count as a one point O. But you'll see that the same special ed student who's in that same classroom, depending on the level of specialized support they need, they may count as a one point four, a one point five, a two point O, right? Same thing with the ELD student. I may be a, a student in a general ed second grade class and I, without any additional services required for me, count as a one point O. But I have Renard who's in a class with me and he requires some degree of specialized programming.
I was waiting for it.
And he's weighted differently sitting in the same classroom. And then the funding is applied appropriately based on those weights. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. And, and Dr. Vermaat, we had, I had just made a note before, like, when I heard the, the speaker, I'm like, okay, we, we need to like share a slide or just model a straightforward example, like at one of our upcoming presentation conversations, to help clarify that. Because it's in addition to.
Yeah, so one is better than zero.
Yes.
You can give the impression that students who need more learning support aren't being counted by, but in fact, the factor.
They're actually counted. Hence the term weighted, right?
I was glad she used the example of sped because of my experience at Franklin High School, we, we get a lot of sped, sped students there. And in my years of there, working there, we've had students that are mainstream in most classrooms and, and all the way up to where three adults have to work with students.
That's right. And the funding is reflected in that weight for that student.
And we appreciate the feedback, I think we need clarification.
I'm talking to Dr. Proctor, we're whispering about some clarifications.
Yeah.
And that staffing, as I mentioned when I shared that with board directors, that piece of the staffing document goes in the budget book, but it's not final yet, but it's what we have at this moment. And if there's ways we can more transparently clarify what it is we're doing so people accurately understand that we're over, we're providing additional resources, we'll do that.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely do that. You know, so if you have a snapshot of one classroom, you know, each student in the classroom, right, counts at minimum as a one point O. But there may be some students sitting in the same class because of their support services who count as a one point four, almost right there.
I'm not sure if somebody gives me, ah, well, maybe. So I, I appreciate the slide where you have the external factors, because I think that's really important. One of the things I wonder if we want to add to that is sort of wraparound services in the community that are non-PPS services. And I want to be a little careful here, and this is not a well-thought-out statement, so just let me ramble for just a second. Because, you know, we, we saw, we saw coming out of some of the recent reporting, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of racist beliefs in this community around sort of, you know, how students show up to our school and that that's the main driver of their achievement. And, and we know that's not true, right? And, and I think, I think we know that, and tell me if I'm wrong about the data, but I think we know that, that a white student or a Black student who show up similarly unprepared, the white student will still do better than, than, than the Black student. And, and yet, those, those beliefs keep coming out. So I want to be careful that that's not where I'm going with this. But we do know that PBS could do everything right and we would have a positive impact on student achievement. But it won't be as great as if we partnered with the county and the state to make sure that these same students were getting non-education services, right? And whether, you know, I mean, it could be all kinds of things, right? It's just getting them signed up for Medicaid, you know, drug and alcohol addiction in the community. drug and alcohol addiction in the community, you know, all kinds of things that will also help. And I've been talking to the superintendent a little bit about some of the work he did in San Francisco around this. And how do we begin those partnerships? So I would be, I, I just, I think it's so important that if we can, if we can have those conversations, and particularly with the county, if we know we're targeting these particular students and we know that they're, you know, you know, focused on like, you know, maybe eight or 10 schools, how do we get the county and the state that funds all these other wraparound services to also target those same eight to 10 schools? Because they have the ability to do that, to go in there and to really flood those resources. And I think we would see the impact on student achievement grow. So I would love to see that as an external factor and then continue that conversation.
Yeah, we, we know that the, the conditions that impact our student reading is to learn are often beyond the sphere of our school system. We know that housing, that economic development, workforce, social service availability, access to health services, all of those are impactful. Ideally, you see cities around the country who are developing a more comprehensive children's agenda with some, you know, some key performance indicators along all these different sectors, with everybody sort of taking their slice, but talking about the same community or set of students who really need, you know, those wraparounds. And then the other thing I'll just say, sort of on a related, with the logic model here, it did a bit academically focused for tonight's conversation, but we're also trying to do our part, some of our RESJ efforts, you know, the culturally specific partners and sort of the work that they offer to many of the same students and families. So same wraparound services, mentorship, enrichment, the extended day, the summer, the cultural identity, youth development and advocacy. So those strategies are also, you know, something that we want to make sure are also considered as part of our effort to reach outcomes for our underserved communities. But I agree with you. I would love to see that the city and the county in partnership with us to really impact on the conditions for, for our families.
Who's the coordinating? Who coordinates that? Metro? No, it's not.
No, your question's a good, a good one, though, and that, and that's actually, and, and again, and Guanlu, we can talk about how that worked in San Francisco, but I think that's something we want to bring here. And I think, you know, it's an intergovernmental effort, but it's finding a champion at Multnomah County who's willing to say, oh, right, that's going to have a huge impact. We've got this money, we've got these programs. And yeah, we're perfectly willing to, to, to focus these and target them in. And then even the city jobs programs, right? I mean, you know, more jobs in the community will have an impact on student achievement, right? So how do we, how do we, again, target those? If we're going after one community, we can, we can target a lot of different programs. But you're right, the question of who does it is, is, it's an intergovernmental effort.
And how do we focus our collective efforts, you know, to create a proof of concept? So we want to launch into this idea of Center for Black Student Excellence. So that's an albino neighborhood, like what if everybody brought to bear, you know, their assets to, to really support families in the albino community? What would that look like? So that social services, health, et cetera, there would be a greater access and focus on. So, you know, that's an exciting prospect. I think Roger, this is the right question. Who coordinates that, right? Our, our prior experiences with mayor.
There's going to be a lot of trying.
Yeah.
To make some of those connections and links and references.
Just to kind of try later to add to what Superintendent Correll was speaking of is, you know, we had similar efforts in Philadelphia as well. And it did come through the mayor's office, that they had an education designated through the mayor's office. And they created community schools where there was a, a city funded position of a community school's coordinator assigned to, you know, a targeted set of schools. And that individual's role specifically, and I don't think it's similar to this in San Francisco, but that person's role specifically was to bring those community resources into the school so that families were aware, had regular interaction. And it was kind of wraparound. But it was a joint effort between the school district and the city's office with a city funded position assigned to key schools to coordinate those wraparound services for families.
I have a question that's related to this. At PPS right now, is there no coordination between, you know, if, if we see a student, you know, that needs extra support within our classrooms, is there not a flag or a way to highlight that they might also need external services, like is a way to act on that and connect them with those right now?
Our social workers are here.
We have Mr. James Lovely here. What a great question.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. Yeah, in fact, that's, that's one of the key roles social workers and school counselors and school psychologists play is when we are identifying a student that's, you know, demonstrating some of high IQ. We are connecting students and family to outside resources and often really work to navigate those wraparound conversations with various providers. Thanks for that, absolutely. Our team is Student Success and Health, supports school counselors and social workers and having those conversations. So yes, those conversations are, that's what we have.
I think there's a difference between like individual student support and a bigger system. How do we systematically partner with the city and metro and the county to provide for all of our students?
Yeah, the, the best time in my recollection, the last 20 years on it worked was under Vera Katz. And she had some education advocate, and that's when SUN School started, which was the city and county. And there really was a lot of coordination and it, it hasn't happened since then. But it was a very good model and it was all like a coalition of the willing, so.
Yeah, I was going to mention the same thing. I think the SUN program is, is an attempt in that direction. They have great partners. We've expanded, we've prioritized school communities. The, the county's been receptive to our vocalizing, you know, where some supports. Now our school communities, they have their team processes, there's case managing, there's teachers are making referrals, we're trying to resolve for those support needs at the school level. Helps inform what other interventions we need to deploy or what kind of targeted interventions. Example of that is the social workers and counselors. But there are a number of needs that are beyond it. We know a family of siblings is being impacted by unstable housing. You know, having a strong way to, to refer those, those family members to the right resource, just as an example, is, is one we would like to sort of tighten up or create sort of a, a more, more collective wraparound agenda. So that, that's, that's work that, that I think would really help move the needle for, for creating conditions for success for children and families.
And I know our counselors also refer students who need outside of school support for mental health or even sometimes physical health, or areas where you can't help banks that are typically free.
So I was going to ask, answer this question, but it's not, a pause is the wrong word. Maybe for me, it's more like wonderings.
That would be question three, sort of.
Do you want me to dive into my?
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's go to question number three.
Pause implies that like, pause implies that like there's something that like I might disagree with?
Yeah.
Or says like, I'm wondering.
Yeah, so question number three, yeah.
Okay, I'm wondering, and none of these, I have a whole bunch of wondering, so they don't all need to be answered, but some of them may be good and some for later. But the graduate portrait, so in our, for eighth, for eighth graders, we said very explicitly at the beginning, we didn't want it just to be S back. So I'm curious about the timeline for fleshing that out because we envisioned it as something bigger than just, yeah, something different than just the S back. And so we've, we're now three years into it and just wondering when that's going to happen. Then the under-enrolled K eights, we still have a number of them. And this is like very much a question for this year, for the past years, we've given them additional FTE. And that, that may be in here, I just don't doubt. So I'm, I'm wondering whether we're going to continue that. Obviously we'll have following years, much fewer. And then a question, and maybe this is in a different part, but it seems relevant, is the equity audit and leadership at our TSI and CSI and title schools and whether there's specific initiatives or specific supports we're going to provide the principals in terms of retention and, and what it is they, they need. And like I said, this may not be in here, but like where is it in the budget? So it's not here, because it seems like this may be like that slide where you have the teachers union and others, like a factor that impacts that.
I don't want to take away Deputy Dr. Proctor's thunder here, but we're, we are thinking about, we've got a couple of equity audits now. Leadership Academy, the Wallace Equity Center pipeline work, we're just starting to learn what their recommendations are. We've had a couple of instructional reviews, those have been very validated to our initial observations. And so we're not just shelving those, those are exactly what's helping us inform, you know, what our next moves are to make sure we're getting sort of the goals for, for each one of these. This week we also kicked off special education audit with the Urban Collaborative. So I'm excited to learn what, what they're seeing in, in our work with our specialized service delivery model. But I'll let Dr. Proctor say.
Yes, it's more like wondering, like I'm wondering if it's somewhere else or?
No, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's internal to us. So I'll start with this line of the question regarding the equity piece. And so in, as we examine our current practice in order, you know, in order to plan forward for, you know, our most desired state, all of these points of review are grounded in, in equity and a framework for equity. And we also use the same equity model when it comes to making decisions about how we will invest and reinvest in, in, into those same schools, CSI, TSI. So definitely there is more to come as we continue to flesh out and build towards it. But the information that we are gathering from the various reviews and audits definitely are part of the planning as we look seriously at the recommendations. The findings first and then the recommendations that come out of each. To go back to the question about middle school, we're continuing to finalize that work. And, and, you know, it's really an evolving work, so I think we're fine with. But to answer your question specifically, the portfolio model will be a point of future. And we're also partner, you know, we're also looking at expanding, expanding and continuing on the middle school redesign piece with some of the investments that we are making into, for example, a creative model. We're also looking at, looking at middle school success as a design in partnership and in collaboration with Amercine Chicago and to, to, to make sure that there's more information around that. But all of that to say is that these things are still in the gears of working. And as we come closer to the sunset of our budget season and are able to present a full budget to the board, we will hear more about these specific investments.
Now I would just like to add, I think, just to add, to highlight a piece that you just outlined. In this written budget proposal next month, we will outline, in addition to the Wallace grant, $8 million investment we received around how we diversify and support our principal pipeline. In addition to that, we are going to make, make additional investments as part of our strategic plan. One of the things, as you, as you're aware, is around how we're thriving in a diverse workforce. Underneath that are specific goals that we are going to begin to, to resource. And so part of our expectation in, in this written budget proposal will include a look using these audits and this, this information that we've received over the last year, all, all the different data points to inform that, that resourcing that will be. So more details to come on the principal and generally, you know, our, our workforce developments.
And I want to make sure it's clear, like we haven't stopped thinking about the middle school redesign and the experience we want them to have and how that eighth grade capstone, more authentic portfolio speaks to us, a student to reflect on where they are around the wheel and the continuum for each of those attributes. I shared with you, I was at a conference recently and I've been meeting the med tech startups because they've noticed that more and more districts are moving to this idea of graduate portrait. And they're receiving the gap, that there's a need for an electronic portfolio that's live, real, that can archive some, some of these evidences that, that students could speak to. So, you know, we're, we're very much thinking about that and that's an exciting new frontier. And it's good to see that districts are starting to think that way, beyond the letter grade, beyond the test score, beyond, speak about it a little bit more realistically, that's customized to what the community said are the important dispositions for a student so that with third grade, eighth grade, 12th grade, they have a digital record and a way to document their role.
I would be interested, as we look at this question, to know what we might guess the change in student data would be. Our board goals were set to 2022 and obviously the pandemic meant we didn't get there. But what are we thinking, like if we make these investments, if we're consistent in them, are we expecting to see 3% growth, 4% growth? Like what are the kind of numbers we're thinking? Because I know we, the board has an interest in resetting our board goals and the metrics. So it'd be really helpful to, to say, what do we think is going to happen if we do this as far as the vast student data? So that would be the thing I'd be interested in more.
Sure.
And I would expect you to like magically know the answer, but in the future.
I know that the.
We're, Mike Lee and I are in the process of crunching all our math data to look at our student growth and we'll be bringing it to you right after spring break. And let's see if we met the board goals or not. Before we then, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's see where we are, so we can have some conversation about that.
And, and as part of our agreements, Dr. Adams and I talked about this earlier today. We know that the board has two delegates, so we're, speaking of accountability, you know, we're going to come to you with what we're seeing and, you know, what, what makes sense for a performance target. So we could bring some thinking to the full report for, for discussion.
I also think it would help our community if we say, if we make these investments, these are the kinds of results we're expecting to see over time.
Right. And we're anxious to share with you what they're going to be like.
I mean, for every dollar in investment, for every dollar spent translates to, I can see the infographic. What's the, what's the relationship numerically? Is it one to 27 or one to eight or whatever?
My observation is the media is, is replete in, in pointing out where we failed. And, and it's not for a want of trying. And, and, and if additional resources are in a given area are, are indicated and, and it proves to be effective, great, let's advertise it. And if it doesn't, advertise that and try something else then.
I owe you a box of chocolate, Dr.
It was kind of my question, what I want to know more about and know better. So I think I'm getting ahead to our next, you know, session on this, but it is, you know, I liked all my colleagues' comments about, about the, the logic model and, you know, it shows all the different inputs and how that leads to the outputs and the outcomes. I think for me, the question becomes, what are the different levers that we have? And, and how do we know? How do we make sure we're finding the right balance, right? Because I mean, I think, you know, there is no right answer, right? I mean, the, the goal is to, you know, it's like we said, we could put all of our money in class size, which a lot of people in the community seem to want us to do. And, and your argument is, and this logic model says, that that would have an impact, but it won't have as near as big an impact as doing some class size, doing some of these other, you know, sort of targeted investments, professional, all these other things. And I think just as a board, as we go through this budget process, understanding what those levers are and, and what are the trade offs that you made as a team? That you said, you know, we're going to put more here instead of here. Because I think that way, we have something either as a board, we can say, yeah, you know what? Actually, let's talk about putting more over here. But even in our conversation with the community, we have something to go back and say, you want smaller class sizes, but that means we're going to defund these three things. And do you really want to defund those three things? Because, you know, we got super smart people telling us that's going to have a bigger impact on what we all want to see. So just understanding kind of what those levers are.
Yep. And, and I think it ties into Director Vermette's earlier comment like that. So then the compelling why, like, so then what, what is it? So then, the compelling why, like, so then what, what is it then that you're investing in?
The, the good thing is, we don't actually have to guess. What are, what are the factors that make a difference in school improvement and accelerating district outcomes? It's important to call out what the elements are. But I don't believe as an educational leader, it's a one-size-fits-all for every one of our eight five schools either. You know, because they may need more of one lever and a little less of another. They may be in a little different place in their professional learning. Maybe they, this is why the school improvement process and that cycle of the team at the school working with their principal, working with their principal supervisor, bringing that information back and, you know, adjusting sort of the supports so that it's just in time and it's addressing the real need. That, that's how we're, that's how we can maximize the resources we, we have because not, not every school is in the same place, so.
I'll, I'll quickly share an example from my previous place. Thinking about the academic return investment, right? Sounds like, wow, that's great. But then all the nuance with the individual dynamics of each school, where in this situation, two schools, very similar demographics, 90% frame reduced lunch, and major math program investment. And one school had amazing results, the other school did not have amazing results. And it's like, okay, once we started digging into it, both had the same professional development, level of engagement. It came down to, as we started unpacking it, the willingness of the school leader to engage with that program. So, right, like, how can you control and measure for that? So it's, it's just some of those interesting dynamics then that will require a different approach and engagement to support. And it could, there will be a different math program, or whatever the case is. But, right, each school system's different, but there's always so many dynamics to then try to compare that. So I.
So this is the work of district improvement. So I'm having a flashback to my interview for this role, right? I shared with you a, a systemic mechanism for diagnosing the capacity for improvement at a given site along a whole set of metrics. And, you know, how levers get applied in a customized and tailored way in collaboration with that school community? And how you could watch those move across a regression table? So we're building that data literacy in the school system and the ability to track that. A lot of that has to do with our MTSS and RTI work in the academic and behavioral domain so that we can really start to get a little more scientific about it and making really informed decisions about which are those levers. So that's the work ahead.
So I have four Ps. And this is more like some wonderings and some just general, but back to that side. So professional development, so just looking at the audit that was done, that Dr. Proctor, you shared with us, of how the curriculum is being implemented in the classroom. So is the professional development part of this or something else? That's just a longer term question, and if it's coming later, that's fine. And then like, you know, are, have our building leaders had an opportunity to sort of reflect and share their thinking about it? Just knowing, just to your point about, at the end of the day, we're gonna rely on them to drive this in their schools. The third P is PE. I love the fact that they are here, but there are a lot of people who aren't, are music people and they're PE kids, and like what, what energizes and gets kids like excited about it? And it just seems like we're missing something there, so have that. And then my fourth P is Dr. Proctor. And what, the question is, what am I interested in knowing more about? But the question I would ask you is, what do, what do you think we need to know more about in order to look at the budget in a way of like, just as, as we're looking at the budget and how it's gonna impact our schools? What, what do you think the board, are the missing pieces that we need to like dive into more deeply?
Those are great questions. And that one in particular, in particular, I, you know, I really just stand for those strategic investments on our, our most underserved students and students only. I would also say what we also collectively can probably take deeper in is the conversation about, that we started initially about those, those community partners and, and factors to continue and leverage this. So as we internally explore the whole child around their academic programming, their wellness, their social needs, their sense of identity, growth, development, entertainment, of the graduate portrait, and those characteristics that we want to see, how do we best, how do we best involve our families and communities to support students? And it really is pie in the sky, the clearer that we're in action. It definitely has to be.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. That is question number three, which, which was the last one. I think it's fair to say you know where to find us if there is additional questions, conversation. Obviously, there's gonna be an ongoing conversation. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Gavero to close this out.
It's always valuable to have CBRC engaged throughout our budget development process and, and help provide your guidance with what you're noticing towards what I think are our collective shared goals. It's helpful to have your, your eyes on that and also to help us translate for the broader community clarity about what our intentions are so that they're understandable. Hopefully, you've seen over time that budget books reflect, you know, a greater level of detail and accessibility. I think we might even be expanding beyond two volumes for the first time. So it will be.
But it's, it's so worth, it's, it's on the, in the works. I'm trying to be responsive.
We signed a little paper.
Get it out of the bag too early.
Digital version.
It's an attempt to, to offer that kind of transparency. So we'll continue to, to welcome the CBRC's questions. This is, you know, as you all know, this is the springtime, it's iterative. You know, we're, we're getting input, taking those audits and reviews to heart. We're getting back into launching into work that was a little bit on pause for a while there. We're assessing where we have organizational capacity. We have to make some priorities. We feel the urgency for our underserved students, you know, so we're definitely guided by that. So just want to thank you for the opportunity tonight for this joint conversation. I know the board directors are gonna pitch in to, to help as well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
But great people.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Hox, for hanging out. Have a great evening.
I have a question, too. Does the district have the capability of reopening a contract?
With sugar in it, so.
Well, you have a, a field for custodians tonight. You had one.